Okay, we'll call this meeting to order of the Planning Commission to Lathrow Village for Tuesday, October 19th, 2021. And we'll start with the call to order. So let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we'll move on to roll call.
Roll call, Chair Potowski.
Here from my home in Lathrow Village, Michigan, Oakland County.
Vice Chair Hammond.
Present attending from Lathrow Village, Oakland County, Michigan.
Secretary Stansberry.
Present from Lathrow Village, Oakland County, Michigan.
Commissioner Forbes, Fobbs.
Present attending from my home in Lathrow Village, Michigan, Oakland County.
And Commissioner Hicks.
Present. Participating from my home, Lathrow Village, Michigan, Oakland County.
Commissioner Dillard Russo. Commissioner Cantor. Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I make a a proposal, a motion, thank you, to excuse Commissioners Dillard, Rusa, and Cantor from tonight's meeting?
Second.
Hey, all those in favor? Roll call.
Roll call, Vice Chair Hammond.
Yes.
Secretary Stansberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Fobbs.
Aye.
Commissioner Hicks.
Yes.
Motion carried to excuse the two commissioners.
I think I missed on the vote there, but I'll say yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, Chair Potowski, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's fine. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, approval of the agenda.
I saw one correction, it's a minor one, but on item 11 for the adjournment, it says that the motion was seconded by Commissioner Hill, I assume Commissioner Hicks.
We're talking about the meeting minutes?
Uh, yes, I skip ahead.
Uh, yes, so we're starting with the approval of the agenda, but.
I'm sorry, let's do the agenda. I have no objection to the agenda.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the agenda as it's written.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Gotta do roll call.
Roll call. Gotta do roll call, yep.
Roll call, Commissioner Fobbs.
Aye.
Vice Chair Hammond.
Yes.
Commissioner Hicks.
Aye.
Chairman Potowski.
Aye.
Commissioner Stansberry.
Aye.
Motion carried to for the agenda, approve the agenda.
Okay, so move on to the next item of the, on the agenda, approval of the meeting minutes, for the meeting minutes of July 20th, 2021.
It was a while ago, so yeah. Apologize for jumping the gun, but there is that one correction on item 11 for adjournment that says it's seconded by Commissioner Hill, and I believe it should be Commissioner Hicks. Other than that, everything.
So it's really more of a typo then?
Yeah, more of a typo than.
Okay. There are any other comments? Updates or corrections at this time, we'll entertain them, otherwise we'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda with that one correction. I'm sorry, approve the meeting minutes with that one.
I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the meeting of July 20th, 2021 with the one correction.
Second.
All those in favor, roll call.
Roll call, Commissioner, Vice Chair Hammond.
Yes.
Commissioner Hicks.
Yes.
Chair Potowski.
Yes.
Secretary Stansberry.
Yes.
And Commissioner, please help me, is it Fobbs?
It's Fobbs.
Fobbs, okay, thank you.
You're good, and I.
Um, motion carried to approve the meeting minutes.
Okay. So with this time, we'll move on to the public comment section of the agenda. We'll entertain comments from the public for items that are not part of the agenda, not listed on the agenda this evening, is there, if there are any comments from the public at large?
If so, you can raise your hand. There's no hands raised, Mark.
Okay, yep, that's what I'm seeing, so, so we'll close that item and move on to new business. We'll start with the Capital Improvement Plan Committee Discussion.
That figured, since we're all practice, we'll start easy. Um, it is just about time to begin our Capital Improvement Plan meeting kickoff, make sure that we've, you know, assessed what we had in the plan last year, take out whatever we've accomplished, add some more projects. And as you may recall, Chair, Vice Chair, you were both on this Capital Improvements Plan Committee. And so was former Secretary Anna Thompson, but she is no longer with us, and so I would like to ask any of the other commissioners if they would like to join the planning or the Capital Improvements Plan Committee. I anticipate that we will have a kickoff meeting in November. And I, I think that in order to not feel rushed and have a really good conversation, that we should maybe do it on a day that is not before Planning Commission meeting, so. And that's really what this is, this item is about, so if anyone would like to join us, that'd be great.
Hey, Susie, how often do you meet?
Uh, just a couple of times, really, generally right in, right around in November, November, December, maybe even into January, but we're, really, it's just a couple of, just a couple of meetings, and then we take action at the, at the Planning Commission meetings to adopt and hold public hearings on the, on Capital Improvement Plan.
So was it the primary responsibility in that, in that role?
Well, so what we're gonna do, especially at the kickoff meeting, is that we will, so what I will do in advance of that meeting is I will send out, we have capital, we have CIP project pages that get distributed to each of the department heads. And they will provide those, those back to me, and it really outlines the different projects that they would like to see in their department, for example, the DDA will be, we're gonna be having projects in there for additional garbage cans along Southfield Road. We're gonna be talking about the sidewalk replacement program and street crossings, so those types of projects will be presented to the CIP committee. And the committee is really tasked with making sure, evaluating whether these proposals are budgeted appropriately, that we've, the CIP spans five years, so you know, are they prioritized in a good way, are there some things that should maybe be prioritized for years one and two? And, you know, can they be pushed or pushed to years three, four, or five? And really just helps to make sure that as the city gets into the budgeting process, that all of these things are thought of, and we have a document that we can refer back to to say, hey, these are the projects that we want to do. And that's kind of it in a nutshell. Did I miss anything?
Quite comprehensive, actually.
So, so in the past, what, what's happened is usually they've started the process, they've pulled something together, they come to the committee, it's the, kind of the page turned through it, an introduction to it. Sometimes there's things that are not there yet, but it's usually that first session, they get our feedback, and then they go back and complete it, and then sometimes it comes back to us one more time before we go to the Planning Commission, if the, if it's in good enough shape and it, it'll come back, and then, then it's just kind of rolled out in front of the whole Planning Commission, and that's when, you know, any final feedback and the decision to roll it out for a public hearing.
Okay, yep, thanks for that. I'll let you know tomorrow, Susie, is that okay?
That would be fine with me.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. So does that, that covers the extents for you, Susie, for capital improvements for the discussion?
Yes, and once I hear back from Tance, I will send out some information with some proposed meeting dates for us to get together and, and have our initial kickoff, so.
Sounds good. Okay.
If, if Terrence can't join us for whatever reason, then the invitation is open for others to join us.
Right, and I'm sure then Susie will like, kind of send that out as well, and see if we can get somebody on board.
Well, Susie, if, if Tance can do it, I'll do it.
Okay, excellent, thank you, Les.
Thank you.
Okay. So we'll move on to the next item of the agenda, Comprehensive Plan Implementation Priority Discussion.
All right, I'm gonna let Eric take this one.
This is Eric's show.
Yeah. Good evening, everyone. My name is Eric Peach, I'm with Giffords Webster in for Jill Bame tonight. And so I was tasked with discussing the Comprehensive Plan Implementation with you this evening, many of you should have received the survey that was given. And so what I can do is just go through the results of that. Susie, if I can share my screen, I can just put it up, I have a PowerPoint.
Or sure, you should be able, you should have the power to do so.
All right, let me see. Okay, can everyone see the screen?
Can indeed.
All right, it's really simple and straightforward, I'm basically just going to present to you, I believe it was six different responses that we had, starting with this one here, and it just kind of ranks the different responses that we have, and then I believe the final slide kind of just gives a overall synopsis of everything, so this is the result of the question that was asked for the, the different categories, so as you can see, the commercial development had the highest, let me see, the highest priority being one to the lowest priority being a five, so from transportation, community character, public facilities, housing in neighborhoods, and commercial development. And then ensure standard support, a variety of housing options for young adults, families, and older adults. It looks like somewhat important, close to 70%. And then extremely important, there was a good amount, close to 20%. To have appropriate residential retrofits for accessibility in order to help seniors remain in their homes, from somewhat important to extremely important, so we got a good feedback on that. You know, to have very important up to 50%, I think speaks pretty significantly to that.
Um, can I, can I interject?
Sure.
Or, rather than wait at this, specifically to this, this particular issue, I'm just curious if there is data, or if we've acquired any data from within the community, whether this is a perception, I mean, I, I understand, and I know Lathrop has had long time residents, they've lived there really all their lives, it's, in many cases, or in, at least in some cases, there's many who have, it's been their only home. And they've obviously managed to stay within their homes, not to say that there aren't necessarily things that can make that easier, but I'm just kind of curious if there's any statistics on people having to move or feeling they've had to move because of limitations within the housing stock or zoning, which would have prohibited them from making changes that would have allowed them to stay longer, so that's, that's probably more discussion we can have about it, but I just wanted to interject it at this point.
Yeah, I think that's a really good point, and definitely something that we definitely want to wrap our minds around when dealing with this particular topic, so Susie, I don't know if you have any additional information that might shed some light on it, but we can certainly come back to the table, once we're able to discuss it a little bit more, I think.
Yep.
I do not have any additional data at this point, but.
Yeah, that would also be good to understand what, what people think it means, or, or what, what, if there's, yeah, issues that are prohibiting it, or whatever it is.
Okay. Yeah, and another thing to, to add, just looking back at the the demographic data for, that we received in 2019, which has data from 2012 and 2017, and the median age of residents in Lathrop Village in 2017 was 44.6 years of age, just actually down from 2012, but obviously the, you know, it's an older community, clearly, like, we kind of already know that in our, you know, we sense it, but the, the census data, demographic data supports that as well, that the, while the median age may be going down, there still is definitely an older community here, and so this will end up being important as people continue to make their home here for.
Yes.
Yeah, for sure, and the purpose of me going through these slides is just to show you what the results of the survey was, so feel free to stop me on any one of them, if you want to just pause and have a discussion.
Yeah, if, Eric, if you could go back actually to the first slide, because I guess I'm a little bit unclear, I think if I'm reading this right, we ranked these based on priority from one being high, all the way to five being low, but the scale goes to 10? So it's unclear to me if transportation really was considered the highest priority amongst the responses, or.
Yeah. I sense that that might be backwards.
That, that's my inclination too, and I sort of kind of caught myself in real time realizing that, so I apologize. But there is a slide at the very end that talks about all the different categories, and it's much more clear as to what ranked the highest and what ranked the lowest, so. I think we'll just pass by this slide, and then once we get to the end, it should hopefully clarify things in terms of the results that we received from you all.
Makes sense, okay, and if you can go to slide five real quick.
Yeah.
So, housing options, yes, so personally, I feel like my response to this question was based on, like, of course, it's important to have housing options for young adults and families as well as older adults, but you know, the, the city's pretty built out, doesn't mean that, you know, it can't change, of course, people can tear down and build or additions and things like that, and so we do have to definitely consider that in the ordinance language as we go forward. But I think it, at least from my perspective, when I was thinking about this question, I think the ordinance is actually pretty good in regards to this already, and since we're built out so much in the city, you know, it felt to me like, you know, this isn't necessarily an extremely important item, especially in comparison to the other questions.
And I'd like to echo Jason on that, my, my perspective is, is somewhat that, or really that, what's going to attract the variety, and I think there's been this emphasis on not only providing, making sure that folks who have lived here, you know, all their lives or a good part of their lives can, you know, feel welcome and able to stay here as long as possible, but also that we bring in and attract new young adults, new families, et cetera, to the, to the community, and that emphasis is less based on, I think, the housing or necessarily a specific type of housing, at least at this point, and in, in terms of doing the things that we need to do in the community to make it attractive, to attract, attract younger younger adults and families to the community.
Mark, I'll have to piggyback on, on that, on this question, if we would have just removed the word housing, totally changes the dynamic of this question. Because then I would be looking at what standards would actually get more young adults and families and older adults in how that kind of works with options, that, that opens it up for what options are available, meaning what activities. And so, yeah, it was, it was the wording on that one, I'm assuming you did want housing, which then, again, to Jason's point, made it not as important, just given our housing stock.
It's a really good point, yeah, if you talk about like, all the things that the zoning ordinance covers, then it's, it can be recreational options, it can.
That's right.
Businesses.
It could be, it could be parks, and while we have parks, we don't exactly have sports fields and things like that, there, there, there are elements that were, were, I think in the early planning, there were some, probably some specific and maybe a little bit private things with like tennis courts and whatnot that never materialized, but, but it's been a little bit different, well, really much different in terms of what the park spaces are compared to, say, the park spaces of Berkeley, which are, you know, also associated with schools that are immersed right in the neighborhoods themselves, so just to, just pointing out those differences, but also, you know, that's a factor in attracting families as well, so.
So, because this is the implementation strategy to the, to the master plan, then I guess I would respond and question, since, since this is specific to housing, it, does the commission have interest in exploring other options for young adults, families, and older adults, or would, would you just want to stick to the, the housing component of it?
My opinion is we should be considering all aspects of the zoning ordinance in regards to how attractive the city is to young adults, older adults, not just housing.
Yep. Jason, I'll second that. I mean, if the community's attractive, the, the housing, the housing won't prevent them, I think, in its current state, I would say the housing wouldn't necessarily prevent them from coming, so.
I think, well, one of the things that I hear from existing residents is that they really appreciate, you know, the, the unique architecture of Lathrow Village homes, and, you know, the, the kind of unique looking feel, and the fact that the zoning ordinance supports that, that the building materials ordinance for housing supports that, I know we're gonna talk about that a little bit later in the, the meeting, but that doesn't seem, yeah, I think to Mark, to just parrot your point, the housing specifically, the zoning ordinance around housing doesn't seem to be something that is not attractive to young adults, family, and older adults.
Which isn't to say that we were, we, we're not interested in hearing what the latest, if you want to say trends or, or data, is related to, hoping that it's associated with specifically, you know, housing options themselves as opposed, well, yeah, the housing options, as opposed to, oh, I don't know. I would say a, maybe something, a trend or something that's related to something.
Not related to housing?
Not, I'd say not related, yeah, something not related to housing that, that might be influencing their housing choices.
Well, well, Mark, Jason brought up an interesting point, because I think this, if we kind of dig down into this, gets into what is the culture of and the mystique or the attribute that attracts people to Lathrow. And I think Jason was kind of bringing up the, the uniqueness of our architecture, and as we're looking at zoning, the word variety could actually help our culture or could actually be a detriment in terms of the, the beautiful homes and how things are laid out traditionally, so that, that's something that we might want to delve into, not now, but at some point, because that's actually part of that reimagining zoning, if we're looking at different variety of homes.
Right, that's true, and we still have at this point the open property of the house in the woods. If, you know, and, and we've had some discussions about development on that, I'm not sure that, from what I saw, that the latest version that was kind of represented in the master plan was necessarily a final, you know, say on what we would expect that to be. I know we had some spirited discussion about that at that time, so that opportunity is still there.
And since you brought that up, Mark, I just want to, at least from based on everything that I've heard, while housing is the most likely option to be placed in that location where the house in the woods was, it's not the exclusive one, right, that's also consideration is like potentially a park, probably not, but like, it, it, housing is the most likely one, but it's not necessarily the only one.
Right. I'd be interested to hear if they have, if there's other things being considered, or, I mean, from, coming from the city side of what, what offers and things might have popped up, but, but that's, we, we don't, we don't want to, we don't need to go down that path right now, so, because we have a lot of slides I'm sure to go through here.
So the next one is, let's see, here we are. So this one just focuses mostly on retrofits for accessibility in order to help seniors remain in their homes, so this is more of like ramps or any components that would help seniors if it's identified that there were issues with maintaining them in their homes, so the results from extremely important down to somewhat important, I don't know if you guys want to discuss this any.
I think Mark already mentioned something about this, and I think it, it will be interesting to hear if the city has received requests from older residents who want to add retrofits to their home and have found that the ordinance is prohibiting them.
I, I'm curious about that as well, I did, I, I mean, I've seen ramps of different types and styles in the neighborhood before, so I, I mean, it's suggesting to me either that they just went ahead and did it, or, or that there is, are no restrictions, so I don't, you're right, I don't think that's something that comes to the forefront of my mind, that there are limitations or restrictions, but if there are, then we need to explore that and make sure that we don't, we aren't creating, creating issues.
Think, I don't think there's anything that's really inhibiting or somehow preventing people from making any necessary retrofit, I, I mean, and that's just really, in a totally, I mean, that's a question I'll certainly pose to the building official to see if he's, if he's come across anything like that, although that certainly seems like something, he'd be like, hey, Susie, deal with this. So, um, so I don't think it's, I, that could just be, I, I tend to lean towards, that seems to be a perception thing.
And, and I'll, and I'll veer from the, once again, the, 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 as this relates to residential, I mean, really, it's, it's speaking to the buildings themselves or the structures themselves, or maybe broader, the properties themselves. And there's an example that I deal with every time I go to my parents to do yard work, and she, they're not in Lathrop, but their community requires anything yard waste wise, I mean, leaves, anything, has to be in like brown paper bags. They don't have street, they don't have leaf pickup like we do here, which I find to be more senior friendly, not that taking care of your leaves yourself is not a strenuous thing anyway, but if you don't have to bend down to pick things up and to go through that effort, it's, it's, I call that more, more senior friendly, and so it's not just residential, but services, and, and that's probably goes beyond our topic here, and beyond maybe our commission here, but it's something to be, that the, the, the city can be mindful of.
Mark, I would, I actually went down the same route, because I was looking at, is this possibly a selling point that we're trying to look at for, you know, the village, that we have specific callouts, I was really trying to read into this question, because I was trying to understand what this was, because I didn't know what precedent existed, and so I was assuming that if this was a question, it was important, was maybe from a selling point for the village, but I actually kind of arrived at the same thing that you kind of have talked about, Mark.
And I'll, I'll, I'll finish that and piggyback onto that with one example, we had, I hesitate to call her an elderly resident across the street, because she's not that, wasn't that many years ahead of myself, but, but, yeah, she was here and, and she constantly was having issues, and we were the neighbor across the street, so we were assisting quite a bit. Eventually, she succumbed to her conditions, her, her health conditions, and, and we had a new. And, and we had a new neighbor and were really shocked that the new neighbor who moved in was like fifteen years older than she was. And he had come from a surrounding community, actually came from Birmingham and moved in to the house across the street because he wanted to be out of his, he, he, he still wanted his autonomy. He wanted a first floor bedroom ranch and um, it suited him to move into the community and, and, and he was here for a couple of years. And yeah, unfortunately we lost him this past, this past year as well. But y- y- yeah, that, the definition of what's, what, what's a selling point, there, there obviously was a selling point there and affordability was probably part of it. Even though he had the resources coming from, I'm assuming he had resources coming from Birmingham coming to here. And uh, but there were, there was an amenity. I think we joked at the time, he says, they, they heard about the, the good neighbors around that surrounded that house and, and the support from, from this, from the family of, of the, of the, of the previous owner. But, but um, yeah, it, it's um, but just uh, uh, there's the, the housing aspect and, and an aspect of it, maybe something simple and maybe quite prevalent because a lot of homes in, in the community are single story. But uh, we, we actually had the family thing, you know, we, we could have lived here, you know, they, they felt very comfortable. The, the, the outreach from the neighbors was, was tremendous through the whole, their whole experience and, 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 and it was really gratifying to hear that about Lathrop. So anyway. Degrast a little bit more, but a chance to uh, tout our community.
Well, I think those discussion points are important to keep in mind as you consider and think about these things, you know, as we go forward, I think uh, those are real tangible things to keep in mind and consider um, going forward. So. Um, moving on to the next one, uh, development, develop streetscape standards to improve public rights of way in the village center. Uh, we got a lot of uh, good response to that one with very important. Um, not sure what the thought is on the not so important. Um, but if you want to give this one a discussion, um. Be interested to hear.
From, from my perspective, um, I thought it was important. I, I, I think it's important relative to dynamics and things that are happening in the community. One, there's lots of hope of development of the city center. But there's also this kind of recognition and, you know, people have been waiting and saying, why isn't anything happening? And there's a variety of reasons why things aren't happening. Um, and maybe we don't, there are not things that we have control of. But this is something that we can do and keep the community looking its best. Um, given the constraints and the other issues that aren't out there. So I consider it important from that perspective. I can also see somebody saying, this is not important. We've got these bigger issues we want to take care of. Um, so we don't want to lose sight of those. Obviously, we want to do the things that we need to do to encourage and try to promote the, the Lathrop that we want to see, the, 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 the future Lathrop as well as maintain the, the uh, great things of Lathrop as it is. And um, uh, and maintaining that is something, maintaining the appearance and doing those things which distinguish Lathrop. Can only help in that attractiveness and that pride, that community pride in bringing people in. So.
I would add to that, that um, I feel, it seems to me that, uh, while the Southfield Boulevard uh, rebuild project that Oakland County has been proposing for over ten years is ten years old, right? Or maybe more, um, probably further along than it's ever been. And uh, while it's not going to happen imminently, it's likely that Southfield Road will turn into a boulevard, you know, before too many more years. And so given that, um, I think it's important to keep the development of the standards for the streetscape in mind because that bold, turning Southfield Road into a boulevard is going to change what the village center streetscape actually is comprised of. Like what are the rights of way that are available? Um, and so I think it's just something that to keep in mind. Um, that's going to change. Also, you know, the city has recently passed ordinances to expand the types of businesses that can exist inside in the city. Uh, the Village Center District in particular is not eligible for cannabis businesses, which is the ordinance that I'm talking about. Um, cannabis businesses are not allowed in the Village Center District as far as I recall. And uh, but, but, but it's still something to kind of, you know, keep in mind because I think that um, because the Village Center District has the most stringent standards for look and feel and development and things like that. Um, it, it tends to, you know, that what we, what we define there uh, tends to be the starting point for the other uh, districts as well, right? Uh, so I, I, I think it's important that we keep an eye on the ball here. Uh, while, you know, I agree with your point, Mark, that uh, you know, we can't lose sight of other priorities that the city also has.
Anybody else want to weigh in on that one? If not, we can go on to question five, uh, review zoning ordinance to ensure list of uses is flexible to promote and enhance economic activity. So I think this one might be closely related to the last one. Um, you know, with the, with infrastructure. You know, what, what types of improvements with the right of way could help potentially spur economic development um, within the, the village center and beyond. Um, it seems as though kind of split down the middle with extremely important and then just somewhat important. Um, so it seems like there's kind of two ends of the spectrum on that one. Based on the responses that we received.
And I guess the question. Go ahead, Suzie.
I was just gonna say, I'm kind of curious to see, um, to hear if there's any specific uses um, that come to mind for you all that maybe are not in the zoning ordinance. I, because I, I'm of the belief that like our, our ordinance is pretty, is pretty flexible and, and has that variety. But um, I'm, yeah, I'm curious to see if there's uses that you, that, that you had, that came to mind when you read this question.
I'll tell you, I, I specifically uh, looked at the mixed, you, the, the mixed use district uh, pretty closely recently, just for something I was curious about. And it's, it's pretty broad. I can't think of, that isn't on the list that of allowable uses.
Right, and I, and I couldn't think of, I couldn't think of what else would be added as well. Um, I'm not sure where it was leading. Um, I, you know, on, on a negative side, I would say uh, we don't need to open things up just to like allow anything anywhere. Um, just because we want to create business because we've got quality of community to um, take into account. Now that said, if there's anything there that maybe there's an opportunity and we don't perceive it to be a detriment um, to the community to, to, you know, be additionally flexible, then maybe there's something to consider. But I, I didn't immediately have anything come to mind as to exactly what that might mean. So I guess that plants me firmly on the somewhat important.
Yeah, that's, I think where my question went to, it's like, we allow a pretty broad set of uses. We, you know, mixed use is the broadest one and then we restrict them down for the other districts. But um, uh, given that it's pretty extensive already, I feel like this one was super important.
You know, it's funny, I read this totally different than you guys did. I read, I read that our ordinance should ensure. And so I was actually looking at our charge. That we're flexible in how we do it. And I just thought, I was like, yeah, of course, that's kind of the main purpose of what the planning commission does is we want to ensure that we're, we're thinking things through. But I wasn't actually even looking at what our current ordinance had. I, I was actually looking at, uh, we actually ensure uh, as we review and go through. Uh, so I actually read it totally differently.
I feel like the, the, uh, the, the, uh, the terms flexible and promote and enhance economic activity. Like i- i- as Mark was saying, we shouldn't just expand the list to be more flexible and promote and enhance more economic activity just for the sake of promoting economic activity. There's got to be a leader on this that's consistent with what the residents desire the city to actually be like. And so, um, yeah, sure, we should spend some time like reviewing the list of uses to make sure that it's appropriately flexible and appropriately promoting and enhancing economic activity. But we don't want to overstep, right? So that's why I was thinking this is somewhat important, not extremely important. Because I was feeling like, yeah, we could spend some time on this, but I think we're actually in pretty good shape on this one already. Just, that's just my sense. And again, I, you know, I had the opportunity recently to, to look at the misuse district in particular pretty closely. So that was already in the back of my brain when thinking about this. It's like, wow, I think that list of uses, it's a lot is, is already pretty flexible.
Yeah, I totally read it differently than you guys, you know, and it's totally fine. Cause I can see both sides. Uh, I was just assuming that our role.
Yeah, and I can, I can appreciate that, that viewpoint. Cause a- and, and it's, yeah, as I said, not the way I was, I was looking at it. I think I went right into flexible uses is flexible and I, and I, I'm thinking of of what do ours individual zoning designations allow a- as opposed to?
Yeah, yeah. So I, I consider that's what we do all, on all of our uh, chats here is actually ensure uh, and actually vet again, uh, what makes sense for the residents of Lathrop. Uh, so yeah, I, I actually can see somewhat being, I understand why it's so yellow. Cause it totally makes sense to me as you guys are speaking through that.
Eric, I think.
Move on to the next one. For question six, review and update zoning standards for the VC Village Center District to ensure flexibility consistent with the city's vision for the district. And it looks like equal parts between extremely important down to somewhat important.
This, this looks like, like a, like a, 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 its own splintering of like the last one. With, with probably a, the Village Center priority, yeah, very important. So yeah, I can see it. It's, it's, it's at the top. Nobody's saying it's not so important.
Okay. Question seven, review and update zoning standards for the commercial vehicular MX mixed use districts to ensure flexibility consistent with the city's vision. Uh, extremely important, does not get a consideration, but very important to somewhat important. So it seems like it's kind of the middle of the road. No one's saying it's not important, but.
I, I, I think, I think this speaks to the fact that this is, these are, I mean, while not centralized, they are parts of the community. Um, where um, given, I think the nature of the lots and the organization, you know, they're tight, the buildings are old, the attractiveness of them is, is uh, limited. Some of them are beyond their, their expected life expectancy and arguably have been maintained maybe in that fashion. Um, so there's opportunities there to possibly do something to encourage change and uh, and to improve the uh, the, the appearance of the community.
Also, these, these two districts actually touch many more parts of the city than the Village Center District. So it impacts more residents than the Village Center District does.
It's like the gateway properties too.
It's right, that is either north end or the south end of the city, right? So, yeah, this one I thought was very important.
And they're going to be affected by Southside Road. Anyone who hasn't looked at the maps and looked at properties where, 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 um, due to the changes that, you know, that are proposed. You know, there's properties that become non-viable and buildings have to be taken down.
That's right.
Question eight, review city zoning and engineering standards to ensure that stormwater management practices are adequate to contain water from, from more frequent severe storm events. I think a lot of cities are juggling with this currently. Um, but this is where we get our extremely important response, uh, kind of ruling out on this one. Um, so everyone believes that this is important. So if you have anything to say about this, now would be a good time to, to get a better understanding.
Lot, lots of opportunity. I mean, certainly um, situations that have caused people and their property harm because of storm events. And, and we've had some heavy storm and rain events um, this past summer. So it's in, and maybe frequent for a while. So it's fresh in our minds. It's, it's, it's been impacting residents and we've been hearing about it. So I'm not surprised at all that uh, that uh, the, the prioritization here is to be um, mindful of these things. And it may, may, maybe it goes beyond the, the engineering, um, so well, engineering in the traditional sense where we we, we, we pipe water, uh, we, you know, drink, you know, there are probably naturalized ways of addressing some things as well. And, and it's, while that's not specifically addressed here, um, it, it can and is often these days being raised as part of solutions.
Not only that, but I feel like uh, the, the science tells us that um, climate change is happening and is going to continue to happen and probably happen more frequently. And so maybe the existing zoning and engineering standards aren't adequate to deal with that change. So I think it's important that we at least review what's already in place and potentially change it, right, to account for anticipated climate change.
Yeah, um, just wanted to chime in on this one because it's really important. Uh, I do some work with Detroit Water and Sewers Department. And so these issues are not exclusive to Lake Village or Detroit. This is nationwide and dare I say global um, situation. Um, if you look at the episodes July, June twenty fifth and twenty six. Those uh, episodes will continue uh, for the foreseeable future. So uh, it's important to uh, consider uh, storm management practices, uh, retention, a bio-retention, whales and, and things of that nature are important to really look at right now. Um, uh, for the community.
And, and especially given the fact that, given the fact that our infrastructure is old and, and, and we tend to think maybe of infrastructure a bit more when we think of our um, sanitary and our water supply. Storm is certainly a part of that, whether it's uh, you know, the, the, the structuring of the, the ditches and the condition of them and, 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 and water movement and control. Um, certainly there were forced engineering. I want to say forced, I don't mean that in a negative way, but I mean literally with combined storm and sewer systems. Um, they have an impact on the much broader um, community and our waterways, et cetera. So.
Yeah, and not to mention uh, that uh, DWSD and other uh, serve water services give discounts on, on your bill uh, for making those adjustments uh, at, at home or even, you know, in the municipality.
Yeah, to, Terrence and Mark, one of the things I was looking at was scoping for the planning commission. Cause I, I think it's actually part of a larger conversation. And so I, I think I said extremely important, but I was actually um, wondering what our scoping is from a planning commission. And I think you mentioned kind of uh, our water retention, you know, at the street level. But I, I was actually wondering, you know, in other cities, they'll have different uh, zoning areas for water and blah, blah, blah. I didn't know what our jurisdiction was when it came to actually, you know, looking at this. I know it was just said review. But I'm, if you're looking at solutions, it seems like we only can actually talk about a couple of different pieces of the pie.
No, I agree. I agree. Uh, uh, that's certainly important for further discussion and puts stakes in the ground about what we should do or what we can do.
That's part of the, part of the puzzle of uh, having a built out community. Um, and thinking of it in terms of, are there things that should be done differently or and I would assume, but maybe the question gets asked more specifically to our engineers. How are things different when we replace infrastructure? Related to, and I'm getting broader into our utilities in general. But because they're older, this is the opportunity to make adjustments, make changes. Um, I mean, within the constraints of the fact that we have a built up community. I mean, it's, you could have your mind start to wander, you know, do you create natural features for creating? It's like, but where do you have the space to do it? To, you know, it, there's, there's thankfully um, limited properties that are, uh, you know, there's not zones that, that, that need. Limited properties that are, uh, you know, there's not zones that, that, that need to be. Say condemned that make them an opportunity to. You know, just start exploring the ideas of, of changing how that land is used, uh, just kind of. Kind of thinking broadly and, and, and way out there as opposed to, uh, uh, you know, you know, what are opportunities? You know, how do we think of, uh, stormwater management if we broaden our perspective on, you know, what that could mean? Not necessarily saying that, that we're active in, in promoting something like that. I think it would have to be something that would be looked at as an opportunity because of an existing condition. Not just maybe infrastructure, but something broader beyond that infrastructure that. You know, might lend itself towards, um. Something that takes, that helps, that, that provides an opportunity for a unique engineering solution that's looked at as more progressive and green. As opposed to, um, maybe in a traditional approach.
Well, and if I may, Mark, I kind of feel like, you know, this question to me is. And we've, we, I think we kind of had a bit of this conversation when we, um, back in. July, sorry, there's a lot of activity outside my thunder and door. I, and I, I feel like it's more the, the, the tools that we can provide to residents, right? Like we talked about, um, one of the things that we've talked about before and we'll, it'll come up in, in future planning commission meetings is. You know, how do we allow for, um, additional parking for residents? You know, some, some residents have those circular drives, some residents have that extra, that extra parking pad. So I very simply, you know, like what should those standards be, you know, I mean.
That's a good.
Should they be paved, you know?
That's a good.
Paved, gravel, soluble, you know?
Yeah, that's where.
That's kind of where I'm coming from.
Hate to say that's where the rubber hits the road, but that, that, that's a, that's a real issue. Um. Uh, I, I know I've always appreciated the, the large lots and the green space in, on the western parts and what was his. Historically been referred to as the estate district. And I don't like this, and I know there's different attitudes about it, but I don't like to see properties paved over. I don't like to see lots of pavement. I like the green. I like, you know, and, and that can directly support or create. You know, more issues because you have runoff. It's where you have more pavement. And it's not to say that, you know, people don't have their cars. I've got plenty of cars in my driveway right now. Just, just the state of life that, that we're in at this point. So at this, at this household, so, um, but, uh. But I think there's got to be a balance there. So, um. Yeah, maybe there's something we can do to try to encourage a green approach.
I can, uh, I'm in a DWSD meeting every Tuesday and Thursday. Uh, I can bring some options to the table, uh, perhaps and shoot Suzie, uh, an email with those option. And maybe she can disperse that amongst the commission.
Oh, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
That would be awesome. That would be awesome. I did want to add that, um, you know, sometimes, um, when. Improvements are made or attempted to be made, they have unintended consequences. And so the reference to engineering standards stands out to me from that regard, that we want to make sure. That the engineering standards that the city has in its ordinances, um, reflect best practices. For making sure that any changes that are allowed and end up getting implemented, don't have unintended consequences. And, you know, one example I'm thinking about is that, um, you know, there was an issue with a busted water main that wasn't identified. It was like weeping water for years and years and years and years and created a kind of a wetland and part of the city. And, you know, it wasn't identified that that's what was the cause of it. And eventually it was identified and it was changed. I wonder if best practices from an engineering standards perspective may have, um. Potentially, you know, mitigated some of the damage that was done in that specific incident. And I just want to make sure that anything that we allow going forward from an ordinance perspective, from a zoning and engineering standards perspective. Doesn't inadvertently create problems that we didn't foresee.
Yep. Makes perfect sense.
Something tells me this isn't the last we'll be talking about this time. But moving on, uh, question nine, amend landscaping provisions to encourage more natural stormwater management practice. Increase tree canopy and reduce overall impervious surface on developed sites. So this is also a topic that got a lot of interest. Um, in terms of its importance, I believe this and the last question were the two highest, um, in terms of their importance. So.
And I think this aspect has, uh, it touches into the community beautification. Um, you also have. And I know at different times, before I was in the neighborhood, there was certainly the encouragement in the, the tree planting programs and encouraging people to plant trees. In the right of way. And I've, I've had three trees in the right of way, um, when I bought my house here. And the trees, well, I like street trees. Um. It's clear that they can be disruptive to the, the infrastructure of the stormwater management. It, and, uh, you know, there's different takes on, you know, what are we trying to achieve too? I know we, we, we've had a rain garden here at our, our property and it was one of the earliest ones and it received lots of early attention for, um. You know, allowing more water to be absorbed so that we're sending less and hopefully cleaner water to, to, uh, to the, to the river. You know, to our natural water systems. Um, but, uh. Yeah, trees and, and tree canopy and encouraging trees. Um. You know, there's, there's probably a right place to place those and, and, and probably more consideration that needs to be taken as to where they're appropriate. Based on, on their impact to, uh, infrastructure. Um, and I'm talking about our ditches. And I've raised it in the past with, with, uh, with Bruce Cantor about the, you know, programs for sidewalk replacement and road rework and. And, you know, the ditches and that component, because trees, trees can or, and, or will, or. And in my mind, should be impacted if, if, if they, if it's necessary to take care of those infrastructure issues. It's unfortunate, um, that it's probably going to occur or that it may occur depending on how the pro, those programs would play out. But, um. But it's something that we need to be thinking about when we, when we, uh. Plant trees and then how do we encourage trees then maybe on, on, uh. You know, the other side outside of the right of way on our properties to beautify the neighborhood and to, uh. I've cooling, just, just cooling through the absorption and the transpiration that takes place from having a tree canopy.
Yeah, Mark, for me, this was a two-part question, uh, because this one actually was more, uh, of a, amend. And I, I didn't actually understand, uh. All the different benefits that a true canopy has when we're looking at, um, natural stormwater management practices. Cause when I think about natural stormwater, I'm thinking about the storm. And if you have torrential down rent or that tree's only going to be able to help so much. Now I can soak up long-term water. But I'm thinking about what's the short term if you have, uh, waters that are coming through. And then the two part is reduce overall impervious surface. That seems like a two-part question because it was almost asking the zoning committee, would you amend the landing provisions? And so this was a little bit more prescriptive, uh, than some of the other questions, which was just review. So based upon the language that also impacted my, uh, my thinking on this one.
Yeah. And this, the, the, the reduction of overall impervious surfaces kind of ties right back into what I was saying with the previous one. And it's probably because I was going through and I saw, you know, going back and forth and what did this one say? What does this one say? And I found similarities and possible synergies between them. And it's, uh, it's, 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 it's kind of a, a slightly different take on, on similar, similar issues. And, and maybe from a slightly different perspective. So, and it's. I think likewise found to be on the upper end of the spectrum in terms of its importance.
Um, I, my neighbors both have had trees in their backyards that have been taken down because they were either hit by lightning or dying or what have you. And they're jealous of the shade that I have in my yard.
That, the, interesting you say that because I grew, where I grew up, um, my, uh. The home I grew up in had two silver maple trees, which of, of course, in many communities and probably even in Lathrop's are listed as junk trees or trees that create yard. You know, they drop things, they create, they create, um, messes that need to be cleaned up. They have shallow roots. Well, we had those and everyone else had American elms. So when all the American elves died, one after another, up and down the street while I was growing up. You know what everybody replaced their trees with? Silver maples up and down. So that's what everyone did in their, you know, various states of. Some grew well, some grew well, some didn't grow as well, some suffered damage, you know? Trees have their lives too. My parents' trees are both gone. My parents' trees were big and majestic. They were huge and they were. The trees on the block that got everybody else to plant them. They're also the trees that for all, all the years they've been in that house, the gas has leaked. At the, because they're in the right of way and the, the gas mains were constantly broken and they couldn't get at them. And the gas mains finally killed the trees. Ironically, or just, you know. But, um, on another front, um, as far as management, um, I can tell you my lawn goes dormant because the trees take over and suck the water. In the dry part of the summer. So they do and can make a difference. I don't think we're always aware of. You know, the water they, they take, but they certainly, yeah, they've got the deep roots. So, so they get it in the, uh. And even with the shallow roots, because the lawns suffer, but you know, that could be other fact, certainly the shade doesn't help the lawn either, but. And, and, and lastly, referencing taking down a tree, we just completed, my boys and I took down one in our front yard because it had died. It was one we planted and it had died. So it was particularly, um. You know, we had it for 25, almost 25 years and, uh. It was just one of those, yeah, emotional things. Anyway. And it's not the last of the trees that I'm going to have to deal with on my property that, that need attention, um, for various reasons that they've had issues. So. Anyway, digress.
There can be a lot of maintenance with, when it comes to trees.
Yes. And I think that's probably one of the reasons why there's some, some properties with lots of lawn that don't have trees. And, and I understand leaves are, you know, it's a fall. It's annual, uh, it's not just a custom, it's a, it's a requirement. Taking care of them.
Yeah. So, um, the last slide here to kind of wrapped up, wrap up this conversation just shows what you just saw. Um, ranked from highest to lowest. And so, uh, as I was stating on the first slide that it was kind of confusing, this should hopefully help. Recap all of the different, um, criteria that we talked about. So as you can see, the first three, um. Are the first two actually are related to the storm, um, and the drainage, uh, within the city. Actually, yeah, the first three, because then the, uh, I'm in the landscaping provisions, which is also related to the stormwater. So I think going forward that that's kind of a, an area where we can lump three together, um. In terms of their purpose and their overall, uh. You know, insight into terms of, um, how we, how you may want to implement the, the, uh, master plan. But obviously everything else would be fair play as well. And so, uh, it's here to help you visualize that if you may want to reconsider and. Move things around a little bit. Um, and that's kind of the point of the exercise tonight too. So. If there's any discussion on this, um, and open the floor to, to that as well.
A little bit difficult to, to, to track it here just from the standpoint that the descriptions are longer and obviously truncated. Associated with the bars here, but, uh.
No, they're on the right side though. They're, the questions are there. So, um. I don't know. I think it speaks to the, as Eric was saying, you know, the, this issue with the concern about stormwater and water management and. Climate change and its effect on the surrounding community and, um, you know, the, uh, things that we can do in the ordinances to that impact that. But also, um, make the city continue to be a desirable place residentially.
Right. And I think this speaks in a way to, um. It's, we've been home for. But almost, yeah, it's coming up on, coming up on two years. I mean, people have been working from their homes. I mean, not that everybody still is, but. But many people are and they, and are preferring it. But being in that environment and given what it's done, as well as given the changes we've seen with technology and, and. It being a disruptor in terms of retail and those markets. I think there's an uncertainty about what. You know, what, what happens commercially? I mean, what, and what's the right thing to happen commercially, um. Uh, and in our commercial districts, and I'm, I'm speaking broadly, not, you know. But, but maybe sensing that there's some hesitation in. You know, is that what I should do? Is should, should somebody start a business? Should they occupy a, a place here? Is that the path to? You know, even starting a successful small business as opposed to. You know, you know, that creating maybe some question or doubt as far as, is, is where, you know, what? What can developers expect? Who's coming to whom, who, you know, where they're trying to find property or a place in a, in a, uh, commercial strip or a urban setting. Versus the sense of what do we do where we live every day and taking care of our infrastructure, taking care of our neighborhoods where we, we've spent a lot of time. You know, may speak to some of that as well. So it's like, uh, prioritizing where we're at and maybe looking at the things that. Affect the community and the residents most directly.
So Mr. Check, can I make a suggestion that maybe each of us take this specific slide? And given kind of the, the weighting of people's responses up to this point and discussion that we've just had about each one of these topics. Maybe we consider whether or not each of us individually would reorder our level of importance for each one and then back in the meeting to discuss that a little bit more.
Yep. Let's, let's, let's do that. Have to move the bar here. Close the window with the, uh.
Are the other commissioners okay with that? Does that sound like a desirable thing to do?
Yeah, works for me.
Okay. Is there anything else that you may want to consider or discuss? Otherwise we can wrap this one up.
Now, this is by virtue of, I just wanted to say, I mean, there's certainly definitely some strong. Directions, um, or emphasis on the, the, the items at the top, they both, they had, you know, strong support. Which by its nature, even with, where there was less support pushed some things down to the bottom. Uh, for instance. Do we feel that, um. Ensure standard supportive variety of housing is really belongs at eight, you know, so maybe there's. I don't know, maybe it's not going to display something at the top that we're not going to flip on, you know, the feedback that's been provided. But maybe that's just a more minor adjustment. Maybe not. Just an observation, looking, going through the list and looking where things fell.
And I think. Actually, based upon our discussion, I don't think that the bars overall are going to flip that much. I think that we may have some, uh, different grading, but overall just kind of where things fell in terms of the. The nucleus of, and kind of where the discussion went. I have a hunch it's actually going to look pretty much the same.
I have to say I concur with Will, um, it's particularly.
I have to say I concur with Will, um particularly thinking back on some of our uh previous conversations. Uh this summer, right? I I think I think it's gonna look a lot like what you see here.
I I'm not immediately seeing, you know, if there was any tweaking. It would be flip this one one position and it's not going to change the overall dynamic. Significantly, so um I don't know that there's gonna be a lot of flipping here, at least. I'm not seeing myself moving things very much, so. Okay. So I take it that brings uh an end to the comprehensive plan implementation priority discussion. So we'll move on to the next um new business item, which is the electric uh vehicle charging station ordinance discussion.
All right, uh this is at the request of uh. Vice Chair Hammond to put this on there. I realized I. I never responded to that email and it got sent that I was gonna put this on here, but this is um at Commissioner Hammond's request. And I'm gonna let Eric take it away again.
Yeah, so you all have a copy of the memo, I believe, that was sent um. Uh discussing basically what the intent is um for the EVs, the electronic vehicles. Um and why consider the amendment to the ordinance, and it's essentially just to acknowledge that um. The electronic vehicle industry or aspect of the economy is one that is growing. Um and then within the the memo, you'll see that there are um outlined three different types of charging stations. And so if the commission were to think about amending the ordinance for electronic vehicles. Um just to introduce some some background and um kind of major points on what to consider. In terms of drafting um that type of of an amendment to the ordinance. Um currently, there is no mention of EVs within the ordinance, um so you basically be starting from scratch. Um and so the point of this exercise would just be to kind of introduce the idea and to see how the commission may. What the what the viewpoints of the commission may be, so.
Hey, so I'll open this one up for discussion. I hope everyone has had a chance to at least read through a portion of of the the support material that has been brought along with this. I I I I'll admit I haven't gotten through it all. But uh I found it really interesting to to learn about, you know, just even starting out with three different types of EV chargers. Chart chart, yeah, chargers. I'll I'll start to I'll elaborate on some of the thoughts or at least. Referenced some of the thoughts that occurred to me while I'm reading through this material and thinking about. You know, later up in its parking issues um. Uh places where parking is tightly squeezed in and 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 how, you know. If we were to say making this a requirement, which uh you know, that 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 a space be provided. Um how that would effectively? And where does it make up sense to try to, if if we were gonna go that route? Um try to um, you know, you know, add a requirement that one spot shall be. Um especially noting that in many cases, or at least some of the things I was reading here, reference the fact that um. That charging areas would be dedicated and they're only available for. Um you you know, uh electric vehicles, which seems like a restrictive and 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 creates some issues. Would create some issues for us. Um the other thing that I was thinking about was just the infrastructure of these different types themselves and how they might. Be appropriate or not appropriate unless the infrastructure around them. Could easily accommodate them without them becoming, you know, in in terms of like a freestanding, like a pedestal type element. Is it a hazard? Is it uh is it going to easily get knocked over because we're finding ourselves having to squeeze it in if if it were, if we were like mandating it? And you know, how does it, how does it really work in the landscape with our parking as it exists? Just some of the thoughts that I had related to it.
Yeah, and you know, the reason why I had brought this up in the email that that Suzie was talking about is. Well, you know, this isn't something that's gonna happen tomorrow or even in the next twelve months. The world is moving towards electric vehicles and eventually we'll start moving more towards autonomous vehicles, right? Where you, a lot of people may not even own a vehicle at all. They'll just like have an autonomous vehicle come and get them and take them somewhere. That's, you know, probably ten or twenty years down the road. But I think we need to start.
Like scooters today?
Uh well, scooters don't come to you on their own, right?
No, they don't.
Not yet, but that's something that could happen at some point. Um so I think that it behooves us to just, you know, get in front of this, and I think things like. You know, if somebody's gonna be doing some uh major renovation that will uh impact parking, it probably is a good idea as. The memo suggests to consider at least preparing for delivery of electricity to where. A charging station could in the future be when the time is right for a charging station to be placed in a parking lot, right? Um I think it it makes sense to think about, well, i- if if uh business wants to open in Lethar Village. And they feel like having charging stations will be a a draw. To get people to come to their business, but then those parking spots are always occupied by non-electric vehicles. Then are they getting the benefit of the investment in providing charging stations for their clientele? Right? Or is it constantly a headache that the city has to deal with in terms of code enforcement? Or is there no code enforcement at all because we didn't actually include an or a part of the ordinance that prohibits parking? In electric vehicle charging station spots if you don't have an electric vehicle. Um so those are the types of things that were going through my head, that at least we should be discussing these things so that we're. Um moving in that direction and preparing for that down the road, so we don't have to, you know, in an emergency, kind of retroactively try to address something. Um that is already hitting us.
Yeah, um wanted to chime in on that, that's that's another area that I mean, a a client of mine is actually. Uh builds out charging stations for residential and commercial properties. And some of the things that we've discussed is that the advent of the technology and that. The car makers, what is it, twenty thirty that they've stated that they will cease uh building uh. Gas reliant fossil fuel vehicles, so at the same time, you have to think about how long. Uh how fast you can charge a vehicle. Uh the other thing is um fleet uh management. Um who's to say that uh looking forward that uh Lethar Village uh Police Department in twenty thirty one. Goes full electric and then we already have the infrastructure and have a charging station uh at City Hall. I think that's the direction that we're headed, even if it's only one charging station in the events that we have. Uh in the park, um I I think warrants uh thinking in that direction.
So Terrence actually went down the same road as you. I actually uh read the document and went. Uh well, first of all, I thought like Mark and said, okay, if we're actually gonna be putting signs up, they're exclusive, so I went down that road. And then I started to explore like uh the uh Sunset Boulevard, if I recall, actually ends right at the park. And nobody can do anything like there. And I was like, okay, I started looking what even makes sense from a city perspective. Again, trying to attract people to our 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 city, our park, um and our assets that we have. Um because to to Terrence's point, i- it's an inevitability at this point, the way everything's kind of been talked about. Uh so I I was already starting to think, okay, what what would make sense from a zoning perspective to even have an area that was zoned? Um from an attraction to Lethrop uh to get people to actually swing on our swing sets and go to our dog park, um et cetera, et cetera.
And in that vein, um we, I think we need to think about the fact that our different districts are not all gonna be cookie cutter. Ordinance like this, right? That maybe the village center districts requires a specific ordinance as it relates to electric vehicle charging stations, but. It might be different for residential districts, mixed use district, uh commercial vehicular, so.
And and I would even, I would go so far as to say that the transition period is going to, you know, influence something. Like, you know, it are the are the are the, should the spaces be restricted to strictly electric vehicles? There's gonna be a tipping point at at some point at which. There's enough electric that, you know, you're gonna want more or you're gonna wanna be able to provide more. I'm not sure if, you know, how quickly we'll get to a point where every parking space has a place to plug in. Or if or if it'll, you know, get there in ten, twenty, thirty. Years, forty years, whatever, whatever that timeframe is, I think in the interim to to necessarily um. Be too restrictive and say you can't park there when we have parking, if we have parking issues as it is. Do you want to prohibit somebody from using a spot just because it has a plugin source? Um and I think that's gonna be a a dynamic that'll that'll change, and it's maybe a tough one to say, yeah, it we 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 need to enforce that. Now, maybe down the road, we don't need to enforce it or or we have more amenities available and we don't need to. It it it's a, I think it's gonna be constant, a constant catch up, at least in the 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 transition period.
Yeah, yeah, I don't, I don't uh, I think it's a, you know, dare I say, a municipal responsibility. To at least uh have a charging station or two. Uh whether it's at City Hall or another designated spot, my only concern that I wrestle with is turning. Uh that particular area into a quote unquote gas station when you have three cars lined up waiting to get charged. Uh say at City Hall and then you then you get used to that, so that's the only thing that I wrestle with. But I I I I just think it's uh at this point, even where the technology is currently, it's a municipal responsibility to have some place. Uh to charge uh vehicles.
Right, and it's gonna make absolute sense. I mean, the 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 police department has an area where their vehicles are parked. Um and when we say one or two, I would say, you know, when you're getting close to the vehicles are going to be purchased, they're going to be electric. We need one for every vehicle. Makes makes sense to me um.
But I I I'm uh the the Terrence, like I I heard what you said about uh turning the city uh municipal complex into a gas station. I just don't think that's how people use electric vehicles, like they don't park them somewhere where they can get charged and then walk away. Right? They go someplace, maybe to work, right? And they plug their car in and then go to work, and then when they come out, their car is charged.
I think on the dynamic there, you know, whether it's uh you drive your car into a certain distance and you find a convenient place to park, I know there are locations. In fact, some of the not within later businesses that I that that I uh go to throughout the day, I've got signs all over the place. And I wouldn't doubt that there are are commuter, I mean. I while there are established commuter lots and places which seem like a prime place to go and be able to plug in your vehicle. You're not in your vehicle, you're going in or you're 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 um carpooling with somebody else from a location, you can leave your car there and plug it in. You certainly don't want somebody using that approach and using your space and your lot while they go and get on public transportation from. You know, and I think of Woodward Avenue and coming going into the city.
So I think that's that's a great point, so that maybe the ordinance should like limit the number of hours that you can use a specific spot, right? And then.
Maybe similar to, yeah, I I was very curious about the dynamics of how they the the. How they manage, you know, metering or charging you for the service and and it it's like uh the Wild West right now. Looks like there's, you know, whatever, I I mean, when it gets into the private individuals or businesses choosing to do it, they can choose to offer it. They could choose to um provide you, you know, with a, you know, a a certain rate at which, you know, you pay to be able to use that space and plug in. Um it's very broad right now in terms of the, it it appears to be, just in reading some of the the information. About what those opportunities are. Uh from a municipal standpoint, yeah, certainly at that question of. Uh you know, you can come and park here for free and it's just on the city, uh you know, and plug in. I mean, you use that, uh it doesn't seem like that's the way it should be. It seemed like it should be like metered parking.
It can be, right? Because the kiosks are internet connected, like that was one of the things I noted in the documents that were included in the packet. General, they're internet connected, they're wifi enabled, so there needs to be wifi connectivity that's provided by whatever building is close by where the. The meat, the 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 parking kiosk is, but then you have the ability to do metering, you can shut off. Or you can prove that the car was parked there outside of your uh allowable time based on your ordinance, and then you can cite or. Or like, there are things that you can do in regards to that.
I I I I find myself laughing because my only experience of parking at a meter in the city, and I don't mean later up. Um in the city, I got ticketed. Well, within being in within, you know, legally used the whole thing and I still got ticketed and still ended up paying the fine because I couldn't.
But that's because it wasn't internet connected, right? So it's like if you have an internet connected kiosk, then there's a a a log. Tells you exactly when that vehicle with that uh then plugged into that kiosk.
Yeah, all I all I had was a receipt, but I didn't have a receipt from the station, I had a receipt from my credit card.
Right, where you went shopping, yeah, so it's a little bit more reliable.
Now, when I went shopping, that I used to pay for the to prove that I had paid for the spot.
So this would be more reliable than that. The other thing I wanna, you know, keep this uh make sure it gets reiterated, I kind of alerted to this before is. That I I really feel like, and it's not again, probably twenty, thirty years down the road, but at some point, not everybody's gonna own a vehicle. Right? And so the need for parking and the need for public kiosks or kiosks and public parking locations is gonna start to diminish.
I think the dynamic's gonna get broader. I I think there's, you know, now we're getting philosophical. I think there's. People are always gonna wanna own a vehicle because of the autonomy it provides them and uh just how they use a vehicle. That said, you know, if if you're in a more urban lifestyle, it may be more of a hassle to have one and have to deal with where do you park it or whatnot. So I can I can see the the balance of that flexibility. Uh seems like there's more things in question with, I mean, even COVID is, you know, people being entided close together. People are are like scratching their heads and figuring it's like, what's the right lifestyle? You know, to deal with everything that, you know, the world, the environment, you know, life will throw at you. So anyway, uh but 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 I but I I I understand your point.
So maybe. Real brief, I'm sorry, Robert. Real brief, uh Susan, Suzie, I just sent you on this Sunday in the Free Press. There was a full page article on electric charging stations, and I just sent it to you, Suzie, so you can uh send that to everybody.
Um I will.
Sorry, woman.
No, thank you.
No, thanks. Uh one thing I was actually thinking about uh as we brought this to the floor was was really thinking about the timing. And I think that's really what we're discussing. It's not where we're going because we know that EV is actually here and it's coming uh Fast and Furious. Um it's about the timing of when and if it needs to be added to the to zoning. Uh so we're getting ahead of it, and that's the question I don't really have a good answer for. Um even how to actually start to go down that road, because obviously we we need to prepare. But a- at what rate and and with what type of thinking? Because, I mean, as the governor, you know, we know that they're gonna be electrifying roads, and so we don't know where that is. We know that if we do a fast charging stations, um things are actually speeding up, you know, it's not gonna take four hours. You know, obviously, they're gonna, just like USB three and USB four, think things speed up. And so one of the things I'm looking at is, do we actually have language um that protects us? So uh as Jason said, it's not messy uh when it gets brought before us and we we have to do this anyway, but now we're under the gun to do it. Um or do we actually get ahead of it and at least have some type of parameters in place in terms of thinking? Whether that's actually, we're not gonna do anything about it, at least we've actually thought about it. And it's and it's actually noted um that that's, so I think it's really, for me, it's about timing. Um not the eventuality of it having to be somewhere eventually.
I agree.
And the other aspect of that is is if you start to implement something. Is this going to be, yeah, is it gonna continue to be? Well, whatever system is jumped on board with, and obviously the cars are here, so there's already systems out there. Um, it's easy to look at it, at least from my perspective, to say, oh, level one chargers, that's just an outlet. You know, with minimum, you know, you don't have as much power you have to bring to it, it's not. You know, going to be, it's not gonna be a fast charge, but it's, uh, you know, just a level of convenience. That, um, you know, can be supported and maybe easily implemented without, uh, requiring too much infrastructure. For example, and then saying, oh, things have changed, we gotta rip that out and, you know, replace it with something different. Uh, there 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 there's certainly, you you can you can almost read it in how in some of the examples that have been provided. With like level one is kinda easy, so you start out with level one and it's like, okay, well, level two is like the next step. Level three, uh, I hadn't gotten into too much about what they're writing about level three, but you start to hear, look at those voltage levels. And you say, you start thinking, safety and and, you know, tho- those aspects and what happens if, uh, you know. You know, you know, legal issues with, uh, you know, is the equipment properly, you know, and and is it installed in a safe manner? And is that risk for being hit and causing, you know, some? I mean, I suppose there's that true with they had the same concerns with the vehicles themselves. Can you get, you know, um, mortally shocked? By by, uh, by the vehicle, you know, by the charging source, by any, you know, and 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 I'm, I'm throwing that out there. I'm I'm not not informed and 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 totally up to speed on the technology and 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 things that have been done to, you know, protect everyone. Um, but that I'm just suggesting that that aspect is might be part of, you know, understanding. Uh, you know, the higher voltage, faster charge, you know, options down the road too, so.
And and are we looking at this, uh, from a municipal standpoint or also from a a business owner's standpoint? Because I think that those are two different types of thinking and exercises to kind of go through on this one, right? If I'm actually a a private business and I want to install that, how do I do that? And then, um, as Terrance said, is this actually something that, um, should be accessible from a municipality standpoint? Um, you know, someone's about to run out of gas, uh, or I I don't know, uh, that that's something that. I I almost see them as two different topics, but very related.
I have a good quick question. Eric, can you tell me this proposed ordinance that we're looking at? This is just related to if someone wants to put in a charging station privately at a commercial location. Not for residential.
Primarily, yeah, it's, um, it's geared more towards the commercial, I believe, but. If the commission so chooses, you can go the direction of residential as well.
Because you're gonna run into the same issue with people putting chargers in their garages as they get electric vehicles. But the other question is, what was just brought up a few seconds ago. Lether Village needs to consider and do the cer- do its own research for its own dedicated charging station. Just as a municipality, it has to. Because that's just where the future is going. But if I'm a private business owner, any charging station that I would wanna put in my parking is gonna be part of my parking plan. It should be considered as part of the parking plan. And the charger that I decide to put in should be up to the business. Unless, are we saying in this ordinance, we're gonna start mandating what chargers we want people to put in? Is that what you're trying to get to, Jason?
Yes.
Do you want me to say, I want Panera to put in a brand new facility and I'm gonna tell them to put in fast chargers? That's what you're saying?
I I'm not saying that that's the desirable thing, that's, I think, what's alluded to.
I mean, that's the question, because.
Well, I think I think that, uh, if a business is going to do major changes, uh, or reconfiguration of its parking. Then at a minimum, it's a good idea to require them to actually install the delivery of electricity to that. New renovated parking location, so that kiosks could be installed, uh, in a future point. Because we're gonna be going that way at some point, because the alternative is, they do the parking reconfiguration and then maybe five and ten years later, then they have to rip up the whole thing. In order to install electricity, right?
No, but I guess I wanna make sure I'm following. I buy a commercial building, I redo it. And you're telling me I'm gonna have to put in charging stations if I don't want them, if I don't if I don't really care about that. That's what you're kinda saying. Well, I I, yeah, and I and I guess, I guess I I would look at it the standpoint of, you know, when is it, uh, when is it? Like, quote, in being imposed upon as opposed to being embraced as, this is a good business, this is good for my business, I am making it available. And that's that's part of that tipping. The mark remark, wouldn't that be a determination of the business? Okay, as, okay, so you can.
If the business owner wants to make that choice, then we should have ordinances in place that control how it's done.
Exactly, I I think that what Jason just said. Upon that on the business, you're try- trying, like, I'm I'm gonna stick with Panera as the best example. If Panera decides to buy a plot of land, tear down something and put up a brand new facility. It's their choice to decide if they wanna put in charging stations. What we wanna is to make sure that there's an ordinance that says, there's gotta be, you know, put in the right way, safe and secure, blah, 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 blah. But if they say, we don't wanna put in charging stations, we can't, we're not trying to put an ordinance there to make them put in charging stations.
No, that's true.
That would be my recommendation.
It's a revenue, uh, if you think about it in these terms, I mean, it's a revenue generating.
Well, I I know that, I mean, I know you.
Yeah, so, yes, but we can't. That, I can't see, it's the same if if you wanna think of it this way, this may be a little archaic, but if you wanna think of it this way. Uh, you can't, you're not creating an opportunity for people to have a a gas pump. On Panera property, because it's just, you know, i- i- it's their option to do this. But I agree with you less a hundred percent, you know, but we should be proactive and develop ordinances, uh, to guide. Uh, if the indeed they're interested in doing so, but they should not be mandated.
Right. I just wanna make sure we're not mandating them. So if they decide not to do it, Jason, and the next person that comes behind them wants it. That's their cost to put to build it in, not the first person's cost. That's all, I'm just trying to make sure I understand that. And and I think it's fair for us to establish what we would want those stations to look like. If there's or, you know, how they're constructed, et cetera, uh, maybe if there's like a standard to be applied in terms of. Quality, durability, functionality, safety, um, appearance. Uh, I mean, it's easy to imagine somebody going, you know, what what is the bare bones approach with a, with a, uh, series of conduit in boxes sticking out of the ground? So that they can put, you know, your your one ten or, you know, one twenty volt plugin right there. And is, number one, is is it advisable to do that? I mean, i- i- it's it's maybe like a trial. A a trial pattern to do it, but but is that gonna hold up? We have winter, we have snow, we have, we have. Yeah, snow clearing and things that are, you know, it's just, it's it's, it's, yeah, so establishing quality. But I agree totally that I don't think we should be imposing it on a private business that they must do it. That would be their choice. Do you have to pull a permit to put in a charging station in your private residence today?
Yeah, you would.
You would have to pull an electrical permit.
Okay.
So, yes.
Once you pull the permit, is there a standard of how that charger is supposed to be currently for your residential?
I mean, there's the electrical standard, so, yeah.
Outside of making sure the power's right, I mean, from a charging standpoint, the station and so forth, where it's mounted, the space around it. Like, like when I put in my generator, how much space it has to clearance and all that kinda stuff.
Yeah, I think the manufacturers of the the electric vehicles actually have designated contractors that come and put them in. It's it's not something that, um, you do yourself, like a homeowner type thing. And and I agree, I think as far as as regulation goes, um, there's a difference between regulation and mandating. Obviously, um, putting in standards for appearance, safety. Um, you know, making sure that there's still adequate parking if you're gonna be limiting these spaces to only electric vehicles. Those are the types of things that I would expect to see in an ordinance at at this point. Now, if if in ten years, you know, it it becomes, um, you know, where it it's like a. I'll use example of handicap parking spaces where it becomes required that a business have a certain number of, uh, EV charging stations. I think at that point, then it would be appropriate to revisit it, but, you know, a a lot, a lot of stuff changes, uh, especially with technology. I mean, I think, I I can't remember if it was Terrance or Will that made the example of the USB going from two point oh to three point oh to four point oh. I in ten years, we could have, you know, level seven, level eight chargers that can, uh, you know, charge a car in in five minutes or something, you know. And so for us to set up an ordinance, there is a problem of being too ahead of the curve as well as that now you've got these standards and you've got. Uh, you know, a bunch of antiquated outdated charging stations that, uh, you know, these biz, that we've required these business owners to put in if if we were to go that route. That, uh, you know, are completely obsolete by the time they're they're required. So that just, you know, I think if you're, if it's something you're considering, do it more along the lines of of regulating, you know, the appearance and safety.
Okay.
Totally makes sense, and I agree.
Yeah, you, when you speak of, uh, when you speak of technology changing and I, and I think of, um. Every time I hear a simply safe commercial, which is all over the internet, you are all over YouTube if you're watching, so it's sponsoring for for security. And and I think of the miles of wire I've pulled out of my house from, uh, an early alarm system that a previous owner had. Had installed and it became obsolete. So, yes, changes in infrastructure, changes in technology.
So, Mr. Chair, I think from my perspective, like, it's great that we had this discussion, it's great that we gotta look at a, uh, uh, an example ordinance language. But it sounds like we're not ready to actually take action, I'm adding this ordinance language.
Um, I I'm not sure if I'm not ready to take take action, I'm I'm not, I'm not sure that I have formed an opinion yet. About exactly what that should be just yet. And and I'll be honest, I probably brushed through the ordinance part and went through and wanted to learn more about. It, the examples themselves, so I have jumped into those sections and started looking at those. And and not so much, uh, you know, a draft ordinance at this point, although I will go back now and do that. So I think there's more discussion and more thought to put into this and and probably a little bit more research, um, before, um. And I don't, I don't think it was presented to us for the purposes of immediately saying, yes, this is it. And I, oh, and and we haven't really gotten into the nitty gritty of of, um, you know, specifics of the ordinance itself. Although we've started to touch on on some of the things to consider and and go into it. So I think, um, I think there's just more looking at it and 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 more discussion to be had by the commission before we would, um. You know, act on it.
Eric, if. But but in the packet, there actually is an example. Provided, right? So it's worth considering, even if we're not.
Yes, yeah, I agree that it's worth considering, and I'm not saying that we're not ready to consider. We're just not ready to act on this one. I think there's needs to be more review of it. And, uh, I think we'll need to bring it back and and talk about it some more.
Suzie, a question for you, are we seeing any, uh, requests from businesses to install these types of charging stations at all? Does it include it at all? You're on mute.
Sorry, it was loud over here. Uh, no, we have not had any requests at this point. Um, although, I will say that, um, in the community wide, uh. Survey that was sent out for the Community Benefits and Capital Improvement Plan, uh, that was, I, and I'm gonna. Come, I would wager a guess, and I'm not much of a button girl, but I'd wager a guess that based on some of the comments made tonight. That some of you, I could probably pick out which ones of you said they would like to see, um, uh, charging stations. And, you know, the changeover of the PD to electric fleet vehicles, like, uh, you know, so. That's kinda where my thoughts were as I was, uh, you know, reading through these materials, so. Um, I I think that would be great. It is something that we've talked about as a community benefit for, um, anyone. Seeking a a cannabis facility application is, you know, what about, what about installing, um, EV chargers? So, I, you know, I thi- I think it's, uh, certainly something worth pursuing.
We need to keep an eye on that, right? Because if something like charging stations would be considered a community benefit and a cannabis, a licensed cannabis facility ends up deciding to. Use that as a mechanism that will provide a community benefit, then we better have ordinances in place to make sure it's done.
Exactly.
Well, well, Jason, my mind automatically goes to like the gasoline station that's being built. The perfect spot for an EV charging station, it's already, you know, got the signage for cars, whether fuel or EV, that it would make sense. And I just wanna make sure we're protected for the future, because that question is going to come up eventually. And it will probably need to have that discussion like we had today. Um, but I, as I think Mark was saying, the devil's in the details on this one, um, just really kinda thinking through what that could mean.
You know, I I work with a professional who is, uh, who has, I believe, designed some early facilities of the type. The the, in my mind, the question is, what does a facility look like? So from a business standpoint, or I'm not saying a business that's providing it. But if there is actually a, that's the service itself, it's a place where you can plug in. Um, you know, whether it's, you know, a quick charge and, you know, they can, you know, pay for that service. It's a place to land if where where a vehicle needs to land, just like a gas station is. Um, obviously, it's not as quick as the experience at a gas station might be, and that's subject to change. But related to that, you have, what are the power requirements and what 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 is the infrastructure, what is the grid? You know, what is, what is, uh, our, uh, municipal, you know, not municipal, um, but, you know, the electric companies. And and this kinda stretches into the neighborhoods too, when it comes to if somebody wanted to put in a level three charger. Sure, they don't have the power available to their property to do that. It's probably limited to, uh, to like a level two. Um, which is probably good enough, so maybe that's a, maybe that's not something that we really need to be concerned about. But but it is something we would need to understand, um, uh, what, you know, from a, from our, uh. Those Giffords Webster, do the engineers at Giffords Webster, um, what can they tell us about, uh, about, um. Just the power grid itself and the having the availability to support anything that's, or to support the additional, um. Electrical needs that might come out of this. And and that's, that's probably more future out there thinking, but it's something to prepare for. Um, and and get a sense of just how does this, how does this fit into the, the, you know, the zoning? As an entity in of itself. Is there such a thing as a charging business? Like, what does that look like?
Point, we don't know, let's find out.
Yes, yes, and let's be, you know, if it's an advantage, uh, you know, may not be perceived as like, okay, we. It's a parking lot that we create specifically so that people can come and charge, but, you know, is that a, you know. There's a land use thing here, when I see it as a, i- it seems to to me, in my mind, it makes sense in in, uh, in carpooling lots. Uh, it just seems like a logical choice, but not necessarily a logical choice to create that as a specific. Maybe it is, if we create a municipal parking lot and we provide those, that that available services. Uh, or the available, um, charging capability. And, uh, with that comes a price tag, if 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 it's, you know, there to draw people to charge their vehicles and leave them. For, you know, a period of time.
I mean, I'll say we have, like, I, you know, I'm I'm up here in Orient, I'm at seventy-five in Baldwin, right? There's in the Meyer parking lot, which is enormous, it's a commuter parking lot. There's like, I don't know, eight Tesla charging stations. I mean, you're not leaving your car, I mean, mostly because it's like an eighty thousand dollar Tesla, but. Yeah, I mean, you go, you park, you charge your car, you sit there, I see people all the time, you know, playing on their phones while they're charging. I mean, they get charged though, I mean, so that's, I guess that's your charging business.
It's it's the new, it's it's the, it's the new gas station experience, it's just there's, there's a longer pause there and it becomes like a rest. I could see this as like the rest areas and, you know, on the highway, on the expressways, not expressways, uh, I guess it's. The interstates. the interstates.
Can I ask you a question? And with me being new to the planning commission, I mean, I could bring a, a subject matter expert to answer all the questions that you pose this evening, and I don't know if this is a proper venue to do that or not, I don't know how that goes. But she would be more than happy to make a presentation, or at least as a subject matter expert, you can ask, or we can ask all the questions that we'd like.
I, I think that would probably be a great idea, actually. I see no reason why we can't, why we, why we wouldn't be able to invite someone to come and speak to us.
If it's just someone who can speak to, you know, what, what's being done, you know, I guess, looking at it on a municipal level, as well as, you know, maybe an understanding for, you know, what private businesses are, especially smaller businesses, what, what they're doing. It would be good to get a perspective on it.
Well, that's what she does. She bills out charging stations for residential and commercial properties. So, if I just work with Suzie to let me know the best way to make that happen.
Yeah, that'd be great. Well, we can connect, speaking.
So, we've, we've, we kind of talked around the subject, do, should, should we, I, I, what we haven't done is probably gone directly to the example, the example, I guess, ordinance here, or amendment. Do we need to do that at this point? Is everyone up to doing it at this point, or is this something? It, this is not a, we don't have to do roll call.
I, I took this as an example for us to consider what a amended ordinance might look like, not for something that we need to take action on today, because we still have to have public readings and all that kind of thing. I think, you know, we have the information that we have before us. I think it's great that Terrence has a resource that we could pull on, that we should invite to a future meeting. Let's go that route.
Yeah, and, and I would say, we haven't, we haven't made any decisions on it, so I would suggest that we just bring this back. I mean, but, let's, let's even have a content in for the next meeting.
Yeah.
So we can continue to keep it in front of us and, and to take the next step of, of diving into it. And so I guess what comes with that is obviously homework. But, making sure, yeah, finish reading, yes. Yours, yours truly, still doing that, yes.
I'll coordinate with, I'll coordinate with you, Terrence, in the, the next week, so we can get this lined up for the November meeting.
Sounds good. Okay, well, we'll move on to the next item then. Now, do we have to formally table that before I do? Scott?
Oh, it's just a discussion.
No, it's just a discussion. If it was an action request, then yes, but at this point, no.
That's where I was at, wanted to make sure. All business and tabled items. We've got nothing listed here.
We have nothing.
Okay, so we'll move on to other matters for discussion, Building Materials Study Group update.
Have you guys met?
We met one time.
Yes, we have met.
And I think that was mentioned in our last meeting in July, it's probably in the meeting minutes.
I think it's, we met after, I think, our last meeting in July, and there was this, I thought there was like a, was it right before our last meeting, though?
I think yes, because I think, I think it was a bit of a last minute cancellation for.
And, and there was, and there was a bit of a spirited discussion about possible expansion of the committee, and there was some more so discussions behind the scene related to that. Jason, do you have anything you wanted to elaborate on this at this point?
Oh, we haven't met again since the last time that we met and mentioned it during our last planning commission meeting. I think, you know, I think it, and you guys, you know, Mark and Les weigh in here if I'm misstating anything, but I think a big part of our discussion that I want to reiterate in this meeting is that it makes sense to have different building material standards, we feel, for residential districts versus commercial districts. And that is important to have building material standards that maintain the unique look and feel of the, of residences in Lathrop Village, and so that, you know, as this committee is continuing to consider, or the stu-, as the study group is continuing to consider, what if any changes we would suggest relative to parts of the zoning ordinances that would impact building materials, we got to keep that in mind, right, that it's, the, the, the building materials should reflect what's appropriate, and what residents are saying they desire for the residential districts, and that, that will very likely be different than what's allowed in the business districts. And the other thing that I wanted to say is that the, the, that slipped my mind. I think that's enough right now.
That's just, I don't disagree with anything that you, that you've said. I, I, I think that's, that's a, a good summary of, of where we were at. I would say we haven't expressly excluded materials, but have given consideration to the, you know, pot, without any defining anything, you know, how do you, how do you hone in on what, you know, percentages of materials are permitted and where and how on a property, and, and defining something for purposes of, you know, what our ordinance says, recognizing that even what it's said in the past, that there's been variations and deviations from it that exist, and that those deviations are obviously grandfathered in, and, and maybe to be respect, and, you know, certainly to be respected. Now that said, there is, you know, an appreciation for the quality of the materials that were used in the early houses, and even the, the houses up, you know, where do you set the line? And that, you know, newer approaches that use less masonry are probably less favorable and desirable, and yes, they are probably cheaper to build. I think there's some more discussion about some, you know, possible reasons why that might, you know, be something that might be considered or at least discussed. And whether it's appropriate for Lathrop, or if it's, you know, something that we want to, you know, just explore some more. But I think there's certainly the, the recognition that, you know, most houses have masonry on four sides on the first level, and and that's, that's a standard that I would not see us deviating from, but once again, we haven't said anything. You know, we haven't made any recommendations yet, or finalized conclusions.
The only other thing I wanted to note is that the three of us did agree that the, the parts of the zoning ordinance that include references to building materials are kind of all over the place and very confusing, and that we really want it to be simplified. So I think Giffords Webster heard that loud and clear, and we're really looking forward to seeing suggestions from them on how to make it easier to figure out the building material references in the zoning ordinances.
Don't forget, we had opened it up for any additional bodies that wanted to be a part of the subcommittee.
Great point, yeah. So there are at least one or two people that I've thought, that I have contacted or discussed the idea of being on part of a study group, or at least participating as a consulting person, like a resident, or, you know, that would provide input. Obviously, I think, you know, we mentioned, we had a session with Scott about this last time, that we could open it up to residents, like, consulting with the study group, without necessarily having them being appointed as members of the study group, right? So, that invitation absolutely continues to remain open.
Okay, so it's like feedback gathering from the community?
Yeah.
Or representative, representation, but not necessarily on the committee. That's what I'm hearing.
Do we have it right, Scott? Did we mistake that at all?
Yeah, that was accurate. That's, I think we talked about that probably, was it June or July? So, yeah, that, yeah.
Yep. Okay. General communication. 27400 Southfield Road, Southfield, Michigan. That looks like it's the.
That's the footer of the agenda page.
The footer, the footer of the agenda page that happened before the adjournment.
Yeah, you know, formatting, I, I, you know, I, I just have one little thing for the TDA, since the TDA is, we've got a lot going on these days, in case you weren't aware, we do have Fall Fest coming up next Saturday already. We do have several, and actually, as part of Fall Fest, we are looking for volunteers to be judges for, we've got a costume contest, we've got a house decorating contest, we've got a pumpkin carving contest, so if anybody wants to be a judge, or has a neighbor that wants to be a judge, let me know, shoot me an email, let me know. We do have several events coming up in November, related to Shop Small, and then we have, we also have our Christmas tree lighting and Christmas Santa coming up. So we have some things, I feel like I even missed things in that quick spiel, but that's the, the quicken.
And they're going to come up as quickly as that too.
Yeah, they are.
Just that time of year.
Did I mention that Fall Fest is next week?
Next week or this weekend?
Nope, next weekend, the 30th. It is Saturday, October 30th, and it's September there, so.
The Halloween special.
Yes, indeed. So, and we'll be, like I said, we'll be doing Shop Small, Artisan Market, November 27th. Be there, it'll be fabulous, and that's all I have.
Mr. Chairman, just a couple of quick mentions. The city was the recipient of a $200,000 Michigan Enhancement Grant, thanks to the support from Senator Moss and State Representative Kyra Bolden, that will be going towards some infrastructure improvement, so we're very happy about that. And also just wanted to mention that the City Council will be considering the resolutions for the cannabis licensing, as well as the scoring process on November 1st. It'll be a special meeting November 1st, which is a Monday at 6:00 PM, and it will be a remote Zoom meeting.
Okay. Thank you. There are no other comments. We'll head to the last item on the agenda, adjournment. I think everyone might be ready for that. We had a nice, I think, two-hour session today, and we haven't met for a little while, so this is good to have all this, you know, active discussion on, on a topic we hadn't really discussed before, and, and just in general, so.
Great meeting. I move to adjourn.
Second. Yeah, I think we're all in favor. No roll call. Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Bye, buddy.
Night, everyone.